Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report. With recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 24, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Before I introduce the Board at regular business, that will commence at 7 o'clock this evening, I would entertain a motion at this time to go into non-public under RSA 91A2L.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Sluckman Chartrand.
Aye.
Sluckwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Sluckwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Board will be going into non-public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Molly. Congratulations. You want to come in? The little one? That's with you, right? The little one? No? Those are your other ones? Okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the Town Clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-of East Kingston, New Hampshire-
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will bear faithful and true allegiance-
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
-to the United States of America-
To the United States of America.
-and the state of New Hampshire-
And the state of New Hampshire.
-and will support the Constitutions thereof-
And will support the Constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth-
I, Ryan Booth.
-do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform.
-all the duties incumbent on me-
All the duties incumbent upon me.
-as Deputy Fire Chief-
As Deputy Fire Chief.
-according to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
-agreeable to the rules and regulations-
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
-of this Constitution-
Of this Constitution.
-and the laws of the state of New Hampshire-
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Father.
Okay, I need to.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Does she want to come in? The little one, that's with you, right? The little one? No, those are your other ones, okay, sorry.
And if we could ask the town clerk to come back with Ryan Booth?
Ryan, stand in kitty corner to me. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Booth.
I, Ryan Booth.
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
Of East Kingston, New Hampshire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
That I will bear faithful and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
And support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Booth.
I, Ryan Booth.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy fire chief.
As deputy fire chief.
According to the best of my abilities. According to the.
According to the best of my abilities.
Good. Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
They did great. They did great.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So cute.
Chief Pizon, thank you for sharing that moment with us.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have our police chief, Pullen, who's going to come and tell us about Police Officer Albert Colson and why we're going to proclaim Police Officer Albert L. Colson Day on July 3rd. Chief Pullen, good evening.
First, I'd like to thank the select board for the special recognition of Officer Albert Colson. As we'll soon hear, the reading of the proclamation. We'll hear the circumstances of his death. So I'll instead speak about what we know of him as a hero. Officer Albert Colson was born the son of James W. and Bertha Griffin Colson in Millbridge, Maine, on March 2nd, 1869. He was married to Lilian Reed in Lynn, Massachusetts, in 1891. Records indicate that Officer Colson served with the Exeter Police Department for at least nine years from 1915 to 1924. At the time of his death, Officer Colson was 55 years old. He left behind his wife Lilian and their two daughters. Every May, members of the Exeter Police Anarchist place a rose for Officer Colson on the New Hampshire Law Enforcement Memorial wreath. In 1992, Officer Colson was awarded a posthumous Exeter Police Medal of Valor. This July 3rd, on the 100th anniversary of Officer Colson's death, the Exeter Police Department would further honor him with the presentation of the Exeter Police Wounded in Service Medal. This award is for a serious injury received in the line of duty to include, but not limited to, intentional infliction by an armed or dangerous adversary resulting in severe wounds being suffered by the nominee. Thank you again. I'll turn it back over to the select board for the proclamation.
Thank you, Chief Pullen. We have a proclamation here. The Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation, Police Officer Albert L. Colson Day, July 3rd, 2024. Whereas on this day, July 3rd, 100 years ago in 1924, Exeter Police Officer Albert L. Colson was killed in the line of duty. And whereas Officer Albert L. Colson, along with a friend and neighbor, Arthur C. Bennett, reported to the home of J. Parker McDuffie on Franklin Street due to Mr. McDuffie notifying the police that after being greatly annoyed by local boys the night before Independence Day, the previous year, he would protect himself against any intruders. And whereas upon arrival, Officer Albert L. Colson saw Mr. McDuffie sitting on his steps with a shotgun on his lap. After speaking with Mr. McDuffie, Officer Albert L. Colson tried to disarm Mr. McDuffie, who pulled out a revolver and shot Officer Albert L. Colson in the abdomen. And whereas Officer Albert L. Colson died almost instantly. And whereas law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their life on the line every day for their communities in answering all calls to public service, making communities safer through commanded dedication. Excuse me. Now therefore, I, Nico Papakostindis, select board chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim and affirm July 3rd, 2024 as Police Officer Albert L. Colson Day within the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire. All people are hereby called upon to promote gratitude, respect, and support for law enforcement officers who serve and protect our citizens and uphold the law. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Exeter to be affirmed this 24th day of June, the year of our Lord, 2024. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And I have this for you.
Thank you.
And chief, July 3rd, again, where will the ceremony take place?
Yes, at the Exeter Cemetery.
Exeter Cemetery? Great.
We're going to do a big ceremony with the award.
Okay. And the time? 10 o'clock, the Exeter Cemetery, July 3rd. Great. Thank you both. Thank you, Deputy Chief McCain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up and issue comment to the board. We do ask that if your comment is relative to an agenda item, you wait till that respective agenda item is called. So I'll pause for a moment to see if there's any public comment. To see if there's anyone on Zoom. Okay, no public comment. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was June 10th, 2024. I would first ask the board if there were any revisions or amendments to the minutes.
None.
Okay. Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the extra select board regular meeting minutes of June 10th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And we do not have any appointments. Unfortunately, we do have a resignation that we have sadly known as coming. And regrettably, we have the resignation of Renee Allen, who has chaired the Energy Committee for years and is moving on due to some personal commitments and some exciting future projects, I believe.
And has patiently waited.
Very patiently waited.
To do this, so we appreciate that also.
Selectwoman Gilman, you worked with Renee for years on the Energy Committee. Would you take a moment to say a few words?
Yes, I always make a have to make a joke about the Energy Committee having a lot of energy. They do a lot of projects that have been very successful. And Renee was the spearhead of all of these things, Electric Vehicle Day and now I can't think of the thing, the Jack Frost Award. We just got the national grant. We just got the LED lights, streetlights, and so on and so on. And but I'm happy for her, after doing all this work she's done for the town, to be moving on into actual retirement, that she spent pretty much a full-time full-time job between her various volunteering things and what she's done for the town. So it's with great appreciation but sadness that we actually let her go from the Energy Committee. She has been attending our meetings, but she's handed off all of her guidance and material. So we should still be moving along with the moving up, I guess.
I think that's right. I think the legacy that she leaves on the committee and you look at the continued members of the committee have been working with her for years. And I know that she worked very closely with them. They accomplished an awful lot. And you listed off some of the things. So I know that Renee is leaving the committee in very, very good hands. And I'd also like to note that she was the recipient of our annual report earlier this year. So thank you, Renee. And with that, with regret, again, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Renee Allen from the Energy Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you again, Renee. Moving to our discussion action items. First, we ask Public Works Director Steve Cronin to come up with a Guam Scott River siphon update. Good evening, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So we continue to make steady progress on the sewer siphons project. On June 10th, the second 12-inch siphon passed a pressure test, effectively completing the crossing with two new 12-inch HDP pipes. After that, we started work on the inlet and outlet structures for the new siphons, beginning on the Swayze side with the outlet structure. That work occurred over the remainder of that week and the following week. The outlet structure is now in and connected to the two HDP siphons. Last Friday, we transitioned over to the mill side of the project and started with the installation of the inlet structure. That work began on Friday. Structure went in on Saturday. They had to make some final adjustments to it today. But that structure is now in. So for the remainder of this week, they'll be connecting the inlet structure to the two new HDP pipes. After that, they'll jump back over to the Swayze side, install some additional infrastructure, new sewer manholes that'll be used to connect it to the existing sewer system. Work will continue as well on the mill side, where they'll install the gravity sewer main and connect that to the existing sewer system and collection system on that side of the river. That work will continue through the week of July 1st. There'll be no work on Thursday or Friday in anticipation of the holiday. And then the week of July 8th, they'll continue with installation of gravity sewer main on the mill side of the river. And then we move to basically site restoration and cleanup at that point. So they are going to bring a second crew in at the end of this week to try to expedite some of the final stages of this project. But we are well on our way to completion at this point.
Fantastic news. Thank you. Will any of the equipment be able to be moved off of Swayze before it's finished? Or do you anticipate everything will stay where it is?
We anticipate that some of the equipment's going to move. We are having a progress meeting here in the next few days. So we'll have some more information on that to get to the trustees and make sure that we have things buttoned up for the holiday.
Terrific. Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cronin?
Yeah, I have one. Is there a day when like the final nut or bolt is put in place to connect one side to the other so we can have a little golden spike ceremony?
We can try to arrange for that.
That would be wonderful.
Not a big deal.
I keep wanting to throw confetti or something. So yeah, if we could maybe arrange for something, that would be great.
Try to moralize that, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cronin. Eric's back.
Don't let the suit and tie fully. He's back. He's trying to be incognito.
Okay, next on our agenda is continued pickpocket dam conversation back in May 28th. Mr. Paul Vlasic, our town engineer, along with the consultants, presented to the board the final feasibility study and went through those extensive slides. As you know, we had a letter of deficiency from DES that they needed a decision made, I believe, by June 1st. The board wanted to take a couple of weeks to process the feasibility study, which included reading all of the answers to oral and written questions by both communities in Exeter and Brentwood and allow some time to ask Mr. Vlasic any questions. I believe you worked with the state to extend it a couple of weeks, extend the board making a decision. So thank you for doing that. And now I'll turn it over to you. I think you have a couple of slides. I had asked you, you know, we've seen the feasibility study, final study. It was presented to the River Advisory Committee back in May, on May 28th. It was presented to the select board. It is on the town website. We've all seen it. I've asked Mr. Vlasic to come forward with a couple of slides outlining the preferred alternatives individually with the costs associated, pros and cons of each, environmental benefits, to allow the board one last opportunity to ask questions. We will allow, this is not a public hearing, but we will allow some public comment before the board deliberates. But we do ask that the public comment be kept to the two to three minutes as per our policy. If there's any individuals from Brentwood here, the board does not object to you speaking. With that, Mr. Vlasic, I'll turn it over to you.
That was a very good synopsis, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that. Yeah, at the last meeting, we went through an overall view. This is much more condensed than that. We call it more of a recap or concise comparison type of presentation. I also have the draft minutes of the River Advisory Committee, too. And I just want to read how that vote happened. Chair Huber recommended a roll call vote as to whether each committee member, based on feasibility study, recommended to raise the dam, select the auxiliary spillway option, remove the dam, or abstain. When the roll call vote happened, there was two that abstained. The remaining five members voted for dam removal. So that was the results of the River Advisory Committee. And I'm not going to go over these couple of slides with you. You have a copy on your desk. But you're familiar with Jake San Antonio from VHB. He is the chief engineer on this project. And he will recap the previous presentation rather quickly so to help with any decisions that you need to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vlasic. And Jake, before you step up for the record, I am the select board rep to the River Advisory Committee. I am a voting member. I'm one of the individuals that abstained. And the reason that I gave for my abstention is I knew I would be taking a vote this evening. And I represented that that was why I was abstaining at the River Advisory Committee.
Jake San Antonio, thanks for having me. As Paul said, I'm going to give a quick recap on previous presentations that we've given. Just start off with a little background. Pickpocket Dam, I mean, this project really started back in 2011 when the state issued a letter of deficiency. Since 2011, the town has done numerous analyses and studies. Ultimately, the last letter that we got from the dam bureau was a request for action, calling for, as you mentioned, Chair, for a decision by June 1st of this year. Paul Vlasic worked with the board to be able or the bureau to be able to extend that. But there's still a completion date to either modify and bring the dam up to compliance or remove it by the end of the calendar year of 2027. The feasibility study was funded by the town and by two grants. The first grant was issued by New Hampshire DES and NOAA, a coastal resilience grant. And the second grant was issued from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and was actually also a grant through the ARPA funds. We're obligated to mention them each time we give a presentation. To recap, so we did a number of analyses and looked at several modifications to bring the dam into compliance. The two modifications to the dam that were carried through the feasibility study were first, alternative one, which included raising the earthen embankments on each side of the dam and constructing concrete training wheels along the edge of the spillway. This option kept the spillway crest the same and kept the fish ladder and lower training wheel. The second alternative was alternative three. And this included raising the earthen embankment on the right side of the dam and constructing an auxiliary spillway to safely pass flow over the dam during the design storm. We also looked at an alternative for dam removal, which removed the lower training wheel, the fish ladder, the main spillway crest. It does preserve the two lower islands and restores the banks where the former or where the dam is currently located. This is a slide showing the current impoundment in light blue. And with alternatives one and three, the dam modifications, that impoundment would essentially remain as it is today. The dark blue in the center of the light blue is our approximation of what the impoundment would look like post-dam removal. The river with the dam removed would reduce water levels near the dam by almost 10 feet, transitioning back to no change by Hague Road and Brentwood. We put together, this is a new slide that you haven't seen before. This is just a quick pros and cons list. I'm going to start. The top is dam modification. The middle is dam removal. And then I created a neutral section. I'm going to start with the neutral section because those are have the same for both the dam modification and dam removal. So on neutral is the sediment quality. So both upstream and downstream of the dam, the sediment was in fairly clean shape. We'd need to be excavating and disposing of sediment under both dam modification and dam removal. Under both options, there would be adverse effects under the National Historic Register. So under both conditions, there would need to be mitigation for changes to the existing dam. And then under the neutral, under what I'm calling economic impact, there's with dam in or dam out, there's no change to the town's water supply and no impacts to bridges upstream or downstream. So for dam modification, under the environmental impact, other than some minor impacts during the construction, the environmental impacts would be essentially as there is today. The impoundment would stay as it is. So fairly minor environmental impacts. Under social impacts, similar and other than the temporary impacts during construction, it would maintain the recreation opportunities and the park as it is today. Under the economic impact, if the dam was to remain in, there'd remain a public safety risk downstream in case of a breach. The dam removal had higher costs and would require the town to continue ongoing maintenance with the modified dam. Under dam removal, under the environmental impacts, there would be a significant change within the impoundment upstream. The water levels would be reduced. But it would create a more diverse habitat after several years, once the impacted area rebounds. And with that rebound, you'd see improved water quality, both within the impoundment reach and downstream. You'd see improved fish passage and more diverse fish species within the former impoundment. We'd restore natural sediment transport processes, which also create a healthier river. And as I already mentioned, there'd be increase in riparian diversity within the former impoundment. Under the social impact, the impoundment would be going away. So there would be changes within to the property owners and people who use that impoundment as it is today. But it would change to other recreational or other uses and more mimic what the river looks like downstream of the dam. As far as the economic impact, removal of the dam would remove the public safety risk. It would reduce flooding risk upstream of the dam. It would increase slope and soil stability once the impoundment level was down. And dam removal has lower costs. Here's the cost summary slides. I didn't mention that we do recommend that the town, with any of these options, look at what we're calling future. So as part of our feasibility study, we looked at the current regulatory standard and how that may change with climate change. And as I had mentioned at the last meeting, there's also a potential rule change that's looking to increase the design storm for a high-hazard dam. So we think it's prudent to base the decision off of looking at the future costs. So alternative one, raising the dam, it was, came out to just under 3.7 million. The auxiliary spillway, alternative three, came out at just over 3.5 million. And the dam removal came out at just over 1.5 million. Here's our tentative schedule that we put together for both dam modification and dam removal. They're essentially the same schedule. The design phase during, for either option, will take about the same time. We've set this schedule to begin construction in the summer of 2027. We'd expect either the dam modification or dam removal to take one construction season, be finished by the fall, winter of 2027, and meet compliance with the request for action from the dam bureau. And that's my quick recap.
Great, thank you. That was a good recap. Any questions?
Yep. Yeah, Paul asked me just to put up alternatives one and three so that I can remember what the differences are.
Sure, thank you. Can you speak to regardless of which preferred alternative? And first of all, the decision that's made this evening, the board will decide on a preferred alternative. Whichever preferred alternative is decided upon this evening would then have to be written up as a CIP warrant article by the town manager's office. And then it would go as part of the draft budget to the Budget Recommendations Committee in the fall. Budget Recommendations Committee would vet it, make a recommendation to the select board. The select board would again deliberate on that at the budget hearing in January. We have our deliberative session first Saturday in February. And then ultimately, the legislative body of Exeter will be making the decision, yes or no, on whichever alternative is recommended. But with that, can you walk through what some of the timelines would be after that in terms of public hearings and some of the steps? Because I know it's not, folks make a vote and we start digging, right?
Sure.
There's more to that. So could you walk through that for us?
Yeah. I'm actually going to. Yeah, I'm actually going to go back to this slide. So, you know, on this schedule, we assume that funding was secured by the spring of next year. And with that, typically, funding would become, based on your fiscal year, come available in the summer. At that time, we would begin the design process. And depending on the option, the designs is a little bit different, but in the early stages, it would be additional data collection, getting geotechnical boring equipment out to take some, you know, whether it was dam modification, it would be taking more soil and boring information along the lengths of the embankments that would be raised. If it was dam removal, it would be collecting more sediment data to look at both quality and to look at grain size and stability, to help design the disposal and design bank stabilization with dam removal. We'd also probably require a bit more survey. And then, as we progress the design, we'd begin the permitting phase likely about a year later, in the winter of 2026. We expect the permitting phase to take, you know, six months to a year, which gets us out to, and during that, I guess permitting phase is really when the public meetings and all of those would occur for the different requirements and the abutter notifications for all the different permits that we'd require would go out. We bid the project probably the end of the winter of 2026 to allow for a summer construction.
Good, great, thank you.
How much leeway do we have on that fall 2027 completion date? If we run into any snags that would include funding, no matter what option we vote on tonight, to put forward to the town to vote on?
Right now, that's what the request for action, you know, and working with New Hampshire Dam Bureau, as long as the town is moving forward to a solution, they usually work with you to extend the dates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I would like to add that after our May 28 meeting, when you and Mr. Vlasic formally and publicly presented the feasibility study to the Select Board, it'd already been done for rear advisory, Acting Town Manager Roy and I met with our counterparts from Brentwood on June 2 here in town offices in Exeter. We informed them that the feasibility study was presented to the Select Board the prior week, that it was on our website, and we told them that it would be on our June 24 Select Board agenda, giving them three weeks if they so chose to discuss it internally in Brentwood. I also asked whether or not Brentwood had any interest in collaborating financially. And as of tonight, I've never heard back from the town of Brentwood. I don't think you have either.
No.
So just throw that out. With that, I would open it up to public comment. Mr. Kovar.
Actually, two questions, David Kovar, 38 Crossroad, right below the dam. Two questions. First of all, what's the legal definition of abutters? And would it be possible to sort of expand the scope of that definition? Because one of the things I've heard over the last year is that people who thought they were abutters were not notified. And so if there was an opportunity to sort of expand that definition, it might be helpful for future definitions, for future conversations. The second question is, what would the ballot look like come next year? I mean, are people voting for one of two options? Or are they, is there a way that they would say, we don't accept any of these things? What does that look like?
So this evening, the Select Board is going to, hopefully, choose one of the preferred alternatives, and that would be the preferred alternative on the ballot. So it would be a yes or no for that preferred alternative. I'll go backwards on your questions. Part two of your first question, when Assistant Manager Roy, Town Manager Dean, and I met with our counterparts from Brentwood back in the beginning of May, we talked about what our obligations were under the law, but what we could do further in the future. And we indicated that at such time, when it was felt that Brentwood should be notified, we would take that step to notify the town of Brentwood of public meetings and if they wanted to notify their abutters. And we also extended past what we're legally obliged to do with the abutters here in Exeter and out in the future. In terms of the legal definition of abutter, we have our attorney here, Attorney Dunville. I'd rather you answer the legal definition rather than I.
Good afternoon, Adam Dunville, partner at McLean Middleton in our administrative law department, Vice Chair of the same department. So the legal definition of an abutter under the wetlands statute is anybody directly abutting the project at hand. So in this instance, a direct abutter would be those that directly abut the dam.
Thank you.
So, I'll expand on that. So direct abutters is one thing. Expanding the notice to everybody else will be done by the town. There are multiple ways for public notice, whether that's direct mailing, publication in newspapers of a wide circulation, as well as posting on the town website. We've had communications, you've had communications, I'm sorry, with the town of Brentwood, both of which who have posted, is my, to my understanding, on their websites. So that notice has gone out. In addition, there are other notice requirements for those throughout the permitting process as well, whether that's federally or state permitting.
Thank you.
My wife is the English professor, not myself. I believe the definition of abutter means if you've got a sort of bounding box around the project property, it's anybody whose property, it shares that property line with the project.
Correct.
Okay. So just using myself as an example, we're across the road from the project. So in many ways, we feel like abutters, but we're not technically on that bounding box, perhaps. But I have not been notified, I think I was only notified once during the whole course of things. So that's...
That was by me, not by anybody here.
Right. And that's, that's sort of where this issue's coming up. It sounds like you have a plan for addressing this going forward. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? Evening, Mr. Span.
Good evening, Robert Span. I live in Brentwood. If I could ask Mr. San Antonio, could you pull up the slide that has the, shows the Thank you. As I, and this is a question or a comment, as I understand it, under, just so the board understands the impact of your decision tonight, if you look at that graphic, the light blue... Let me point out some areas. Because I understand it...
Could you, can you grab that microphone for Mr. Span while he...
Thank you. The light blue, the dark blue is what will remain, once the dam is removed. The light blue, which is currently water, will disappear. Is that correct?
Won't be standing water, weapons.
Well, or swamp, or dry land.
Correct.
And I guess this, this then kind of leads to the question for your attorney. The impact of this project will affect river abutters all the way for several miles in Brentwood. Are you saying that they are not technically abutters to be notified?
Under the law, they are not direct abutters. However, as I said, the publication in the newspaper will solve any issues if the abutters are not direct, or the folks upstream or downstream do not receive direct notice.
The newspaper. Who reads newspapers anymore?
I do.
I do.
Well, yeah. I read the New York Times, but anyway.
We're trying to stand that at the, trying to change that at the state level, but it keeps...
You've heard my position, and I'm not going to repeat any of it. I just, well, two things. Number one, as Mr. San Antonio said, this process started in 2011. The first time that abutters received the opportunity to comment on any of this was in February of 2024. So this went on for 13 years without any input from abutters. Secondly, I wore this Brentwood T-shirt because it shows that Brentwood was founded in 1742. That was 90 years after the first dam was at the Pickpocket Site. That dam, there's been a dam there for 370 years, and there's been an ecosystem that has developed over 370 years. And that ecosystem will be drastically altered if the dam is removed. And I want to make sure you understand that and take that into account in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had one, we've had, we've had one public hearing. That was back in February, and that was a public hearing to allow for testimony for folks to come forward with public comment. Prior to that, that was a public hearing. We've had posted River Advisory Committee meetings, and we've taken public comment at those, Mr. Span, including yours, and then prior to February. So all of the River Advisory Committee meetings were posted. The minutes were posted on the website. When it was brought to the Select Board on October 3, it was posted as part of the agenda. The minutes were posted. We had folks come to speak to it. We've had folks come for public comment. So I'm not sure if we're mistaking the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. We've had one public hearing thus far. And I think what we heard both from Attorney Dunville and from Jake is that whatever happens in March, there are going to be plenty of public meetings moving forward in which the direct abutters will be notified, as per the statute, and where the town of Exeter has already met with our counterparts in Brentwood and said that we'll go above and beyond what we legally need to do to make sure folks are notified. So I just want to be really, really clear on that. We have a hand up, and I don't know whose hand it is online, if we could just, and then we'll get to you, sir. I may need some help from our folks out back.
Good evening. This is the...
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, and I have no idea why our, why our actual live photo isn't showing, but...
That's on our end, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, that's the important part. I'm Denise Puleo.
And I'm Paul Puleo.
And we're the head speakers of the Kowasak Band of the Pennecook Abnaki people. And we just wanted to chime in real quickly, voicing support of removal of the dam. For nearly 13,000 years, we had the fish and water free-flowing in that region before colonial contact, and the dam stopped the fish flows. And removing that dam would return some of the ecosystem back to the way it should have been. And we are, as you may know, we are strong opponents for returning Mother Nature back to where she should be.
Yeah, we've partnered with many, many community action groups in the Great Bay Area. The Cochico, the dams in Rochester are being removed, the ones in Dover and Durham. We see this as a holistic thing, returning back to the environmental and social justice issues. These dams were, in Europe, were banned at the time that they were being built in New England because the European governance, the royals, recognized the destruction that the dams had on foodways. And, and, you know, it went unchecked here in New England because of the greed, bluntly, and, and the commerce issues. We see this holistically to return the river's estuary system back to its natural flow. All we can say is we support any, anything that goes towards removing the dam totally and restoring the ecosystem as it was prior to 1600. And that's all we can say. I mean, we've, we've worked proactively with every town that is looking at this, and we would love to support Exeter if they go in that direction. And that's all we have to say.
Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you for your comment. Sir, please.
Jim Breeling from Seven Nelson Drive in Exeter. Thank you for the First Nations people that just spoke. That's going to be one of the issues that I speak to in support of dam removal. I wanted to reiterate the fact that the difference between the dam-in options and the dam-in-out option is $2 million. And the fiduciary responsibility, you know, would, would, is one of the reasons that I would support dam removal, that it's an extra burden for the citizens of Exeter Township. Secondly, I wanted to speak a little bit about the difference between the lens that a property owner views versus the lens that an environmental scientist would use in judging the environmental impacts. Because in the feasibility presentation, one of the benefits of dam out is environmental benefits. The feasibility study was funded with a lot of money, but limited scope. And I just wanted to remind the Select Board that probably beyond the scope of your analysis, but certainly supported by the science of dam removal, is the benefit to the entire Exeter River watershed, therefore, the benefit to the Great Bay estuary, critical watershed which is threatened and benefits from dam removal. And then indirectly, also, the Atlantic fisheries. So, you know, it's beyond the feasibility study for you folks to outline those benefits, but the science actually suggests that the number-one remediable factor that can be done to bring back fisheries of salmon, cod, shad, is dam removal along the eastern seaboard. And in support of the First Nations people that spoke, the other lens that is different from a property owner to an environmentalist is the stewardship look of seven generations back and seven generations into the future. I believe it's a native peoples' look at the stewardship of environmental resources. And wherever a governmental body has the ability to exert a stewardship decision that benefits seven generations in the future, as the representatives of the tribe have indicated, we would support that and encourage that. And then, lastly, the, the point about it being a 300-year-old ecosystem. I think in the packet that went before the Select Board for this meeting, I submitted a citizen's guide to river restoration, which comes from the state of Maine, who's actively pursuing dam removal to restore the Atlantic salmon and the sturgeon populations of the native fisheries in the Maine rivers. But one of the things that they quote on page nine, which I just, of that presentation, is that recent research has documented that the water stored behind the dam is neither the habitat of a river nor the habitat of a naturally occurring lake. As a result, dams produce an ecosystem that is not well-designed for the species that occur in either habitat. So, yes, it's something that's existed for 300 years, but it's neither a river or a lake. And a dam-out option would restore a river ecosystem that has been there since the last Ice Age. So that, that should be considered in your, in your deliberation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeling. And I do note that your email to the board, as well as the attachments, are in our packet, and it's interesting reading over the weekend. We also have a letter from Exeter resident Nick Drinker, asking the board to consider dam removal as well. That's in our packet. Other public comment, please.
Hi, Catherine Edison from Conny Road in Exeter. I just wondered what ever happened with the conversation about when the water goes down 10 feet, the difference in the property line for all of those people along the river, six miles up from the actual dam? Who's going to pay the difference in the taxes? And then, what was recommended by the town, I believe, was consult your attorney? And we didn't have any other guidance as far as... And we didn't have any other guidance as far as, you know, who's going to pay for that gap? And who's going to get, you know, the tax burden there? Or is the town going to pick that up, maintain that area themselves? You know, I don't really understand what's happening with that. So I wondered if there was anything else that came from that besides consult your attorney?
I can address that, generally speaking. So when you're looking at your deed or your surveys--
Yeah.
--the change in the river level here should have no effect on what your deed and your surveys currently show. When your deed was drafted and signed and executed, that was based on, and you go back in the chain of title, that's based on the conditions that were, that existed at the time the deed was originally drafted and signed. So there should be no change whatsoever to your property and any impacts to taxes. But as I say, that's a general matter. I have not looked at specifically at your deed.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I'm against dam removal. And I feel that even if it's not a law that means that, you know, you don't have to legally contact the abutters beyond the direct abutters of the dam, I think that your conscience should tell you that it would be a wonderful thing if you did contact all those property owners, because they will all be impacted. If they use the dam, if they use the river at all, which I see people on the river constantly, I would suggest that would be the very smart thing to do for, for everybody to have their heads up in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please.
Jay Garnett to Stony Water Road. So as far as the property line goes, so I have 125 feet of frontage on the river. So I'm not going to pay any more taxes, because now it's going to drop 10 feet, 10 feet times 125. No?
I think our attorney answered that question.
So when, when it starts to erode, am I going to pay less taxes? I may not pay more, but when, when the river starts moving faster, I expect there's going to be some erosion.
So generally speaking, again, I have not reviewed your specific deed, but there should be no changes in the property lines as they stand right now to what will be changed after, if and when the dam is removed?
Okay. Well, with the petition that I, I created, there are now 286 people who agree with me that they don't want to see the dam go anywhere. What happens with that? I mean, there were a lot of them who were Exeter residents, there were a lot of them that were Brentwood residents, and there were people from outside of town who had an opinion on this. So does their opinion matter, any of them? Or is it going to ultimately be up to the voters? And when it is on the ballot, is it, is it specifically going to say dam removal and then keep the dam? And then what happens then? If, if they vote not to remove the dam, what's the next step after that with regard to modifying it? Because as we see right now, that's 83% of that footprint is going to be disappeared. 83%. That's a lot. It's a lot of animals that are going to die who have been here for 370-something years. There's a habitat there, and it's going away now. And maybe we, we created this, and maybe the Native Americans don't like it, and I get it. And I understand all the arguments. But what's there is there now. Taking it away is only going to kill a lot of animals, and nature will rebound. But why do we have to kill all these animals when we can just fix it? What, what happens with the 286 people that have voiced their opinion?
So let me try. There's a lot in that question. Yes, everybody's opinion matters. And we've taken everybody's opinions, we've taken their questions, both orally and written. And there was an open, a very large open window of opportunity for folks to submit questions and comments who are not available for the public hearing. All of those questions and comments were addressed in the feasibility study. And I'm not going to speak for anybody else in this room, but I've read the entire feasibility study from front to end, particularly the questions and comments from folks and the answers from our consultants, because everybody's opinion does matter. And everybody's opinion that's come to the podium, both at the River Advisory Committee and here at Select Board meetings and across the street in February, everybody's opinion mattered. You submitted, you've spoke of the petition of over 200 names for many months, and you were here last in May, you submitted--
Yes.
--a copy of it. That was the first time that I realized that most of the names were not from New Hampshire. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't respect their opinion. I do. We had folks this evening who spoke during public comment. We, as a board, allowed everybody to speak, not only at this meeting, but every other meeting. Ultimately, whatever we decide this evening is going to go on the warrant article. We're not deciding whether to remove it or not remove it. We're making a decision based on the evidence of our experts, based on the questions that folks have asked, and based on those answers, based on the testimony that we've heard in multiple public meetings and one public hearing thus far. But ultimately, it's going to be up to the legislative body of Exeter to cast a vote on whatever preferred alternative we recommend this evening. So I don't know what that is yet, because we haven't deliberated yet. We wanted to hear from folks here. But whichever one it is, it will be that preferred alternative on the warrant article, and it will be a yes or no. And it will be explained, just like every other CIP warrant article. The folks in Exeter will determine the fate of the preferred alternative, because they're the ones paying the taxpayer dollars. They're the legislative body that's going to decide what preferred alternative that we select. And everybody's opinion does matter. But at the end of the day, anybody that doesn't reside in Exeter, that is a registered voter of Exeter on that date in March, that's whose opinion is going to matter on the ballot.
As far as the ballot goes, it's, there's a yes or no. I get it. But what happens if it is no? What, what's the next step as far as modification goes?
If a preferred alternative is put on a ballot and it does not pass, it would be like any other warrant article that has not passed in past years. It would come back to town staff, the Select Board, to figure out what the next step would be. Okay?
Okay.
For instance, the Public Safety Complex that just passed, didn't pass the year before. So we came back to the drawing board, we brought it back to the voters, and I would suspect that, I'm not going to look into a crystal ball, so I'm stopping at hypotheticals here, but I think I've answered your question to the best of my ability. Thank you and appreciate your comment tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment before we bring it back to the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions from board members?
No, Mr. Chair, I think that you said it very well, that we've had opportunities to listen, to talk, to present. We've posted, we've tried to get as much information out there to, in the, in the 21st century I feel comfortable in making a decision tonight. I would also, I have to say this. We've had a lot of stuff come at us about our lack of transparency and our lack of notification. And I would like to say that if you, I wonder what Brentwood has done with their people. Because they have talked about it. It's in, I've seen notes in their Conservation Commission meetings. So it's been out, people in Brentwood have known that this letter of deficiency has been out there. So, you know, some pushback has to go upriver, in my opinion. But I feel like we've done our due diligence in this process, as we know from the Great Dam experience, does continue with lots of public input, continuous public input, I have to, as I remember. So no one's shut out of this conversation.
I'd like to jump in if I could, Mr. Chair.
Please.
You brought up a great point, Selectwoman Gilman, that hasn't really been discussed this evening or that much previously. We do have a great body of experience on dam removal because of what we did with the Great Dam. I have to honestly say that I was torn when we were considering removing the Great Dam. I ended up trying to, I was on the Select Board at that time. I ended up, I ended up learning a valuable lesson, that municipal affairs are not done with a scalpel, they're done with a sledgehammer. You kind of get things in the right area and you move forward. And I wish I had been in the vanguard on Great Dam removal, knowing what I know now, having seen that dam come out, having seen the efforts at bank stabilization that were done up and down the river, seeing a shift, no doubt, in the biome and in the wildlife that's there. But all the great efforts that were made to stabilize banks, it really made a difference. And I would call the Great Dam removal an unqualified success. The deoxygenated water that was held back behind that dam, that no living thing could pass through, is very similar to the deoxygenated water that Mr. Breeling just talked about. That's really not a lake, it's not a river, it's really not a biome. Nothing can live in it, because there's no oxygen in it, very difficult for fish to pass through it. It's beautiful. I loved the way the Great Dam looked in the middle of Exeter's downtown, and it was why I was so torn. I really had a hard time emotionally thinking about that dam not being there. But what we have now is so much more beautiful and so much more alive, that it's hard for me to imagine that we won't experience something similar with removal of Pickpocket Dam if that is the alternative that we pursue. So that is the alternative that I prefer. I'm one member of this board, shaping a question for the legislative body, that is, the voters of this town. But based on the experience we had with Great Dam, I think removal is the preferred alternative at this time. That's my opinion. And I understand, Jay, I understand your emotional attachment to it as it is, because I had the same attachment to the Great Dam as a downtown merchant for many years. I loved the way the dam looked. I loved the historicity. But we did the right thing when we removed it. And I have to thank the citizens of this town for that, because they led the way. It was a citizens' petition that led the way for a Great Dam removal, and those citizens were wise to undertake that, that alternative. So I'm choosing to be in the vanguard of dam removal this time, because I've learned from my past experience. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectwoman Chartran. Any other comment from board members, any questions?
All of my comments have already been said between Julie and Dan, so I, I don't feel the need to repeat them, other than I, I feel we've done our due diligence, we've listened. I will repeat about the Great Dam coming out. I, I was born here, I've lived here my entire life. I love the sound of the dam, the sight of the dam. But the realistic approach to this is, is an overall what's best for our town. So, yeah, I just, I guess I'll leave it at that. But change is difficult for all of us, and we just have to make some really sound and wise decisions.
Thank you.
I don't, but I do feel like, you know, sometimes these decisions are made sort of generations before we even get here. And I think one of the big things that I've learned, certainly in my coming up on five, six years--
Six plus.
Yeah, six plus years, that's right, on the Select Board, is it really matters when we don't take care of our infrastructure? And then we are put in this place of, you know, we are not making a decision because we want to be taking this issue up. We're making a decision because we have a letter of deficiency from DES, and there is nothing that we can do besides turn back the time 100 years and start fortifying this stuff. And this has happened over and over and over again. And, and here we are, and we're making the decision with the facts that are in front of us right now. And so I understand, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate how hard these, these decisions can be, and I also come to this decision with, you know, I, I don't see another choice. The other choice is a huge, huge, huge investment for something that we know, science tells us, is not the right thing to do. And so here we are, making this decision. It's a bummer. I think the big lessons for me are, you know, proactive communication, and, you know, even if the people who are impacted are not our voters, it's still the right thing to do, and that's a lesson that I'm taking from this.
Thank you. I won't repeat what you all said. I'm in complete agreement. I would like to just acknowledge, though, and thank Mr. Velasic, who has been working on this for years, ever since the town received the letter of deficiency. I'd like to recognize the members of the River Advisory Committee, who have been in the trenches with Mr. Velasic and our consultants for years, as well as Attorney Dunville, because they did a lot of the heavy lifting to bring a recommendation to the Select Board. I'd like to thank Mr. Velasic for seeking alternative funding for this project, for seeking alternative funding for the studies. I have to express my gratitude to you for that and your staff, because you've looked to do what the best thing for the town is, the best thing for folks that are going to be affected in looking at the financial picture for the town of Exeter as well. But to not, to not recognize the River Advisory Committee for the years of work they've done, I'd be remiss in doing that. I would like to also recognize and thank folks from Exeter and from Brentwood and from other communities who have either written to us, have called us, who have attended a public hearing. I'd like to thank my counterpart in Brentwood for meeting with me over the last two months to allow me to update the town on what is happening and also providing an opportunity for Brentwood to reach out. So I'd like to recognize all those parties and express my gratitude. So with that, I would ask if there's any member of the board that feels compelled to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I do. And Joanna, I have this written out, so I'll give it to you. Mr. Chair, I move that upon review of the feasibility study, all of the preferred options, as well as all public comments, both written and oral, we move to authorize the town manager or designee to implement a CIP and warrant article to remove the dam. We also seek to obtain all outside funding, including but not limited to state and federal funding. That is my motion.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'd like to take a roll call vote on this. Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman?
I, I want to say first, I grew up in that area, just down the river from Pickpocket Dam, and it was my playground also. And I am reluctantly saying aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Chair says aye, motion passed at 0:00. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Come on up, Teresa, let's get this night going.
So next on our agenda, and I guess Eric Lathley, you could never--
I try not to.
You look great.
Thank you, good night. Thank you, good night.
Come on up, Teresa, let's get this night going.
So next on our agenda, and I guess Eric Gladley, you could never say.
I try not to. Thank you. Thank you. Ever since our trip to Hawaii, my wife and I have been working hard every day to maintain our glow. So I recommend retirement to anybody who can do it, because you have some time to actually reflect. And I've told hundreds of people, I said, my mission when I built the house, to be able to go out in the morning with a cup of coffee, and watch the sun rise, and get some sun, and then relax in the afternoon with a beer in my hand. We have succeeded.
Whatever you're doing, it's working out well, because you look great.
We succeeded at that. But I'm more than happy to come back as your emergency management director and do a quick little synopsis on the natural hazard mitigation plan. And Chief, our assistant emergency manager director, Chief Pizon, has put together some notes, and it's pretty much right in line with what I was going to do. But just a little context, FEMA requires that the town maintain hazard, a natural hazard mitigation plan. Funny, we're talking about flooding and the river and all this, it kind of brings the context, and I'm right in Dan's court. I was not a big supporter of the dam removal, but when I saw three feet of water on Court Street flooding a mailbox, and just the constant river change, I have to admit, we haven't seen anything to that magnitude since the dam removal. And I think it just makes some sense. But some context, the original plan was 2008. I'm going to introduce Teresa Walker in a minute. She's helped the 2013 revision, the 2018 revision, and we were due to revise in '23. Due to a number of issues that she'll address with FEMA changes in structure, it's been put off to '24. But we met several times as a working group, a lot of town officials, public, Select Board reps were there. I know we met on June 20th of '23, again in September of '23, and our final meeting as a working group to add input and make changes, recommended changes to the plan was on April 17, when it was handed off to Teresa to kind of craft it and see where we go from here. So with that context, I'll let Teresa explain where we are and the next steps in regards to both state and FEMA approval of the plan.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. And it's been my privilege to work with both chiefs to update this plan as the, what do we call you now, the prior chief, I think this is the third or fourth round of hazard mitigation planning that I've done with you guys. So for those of you who aren't familiar, I think almost many of you have seen me talk to you about this hazard mitigation plan. But for folks at home, FEMA does require every municipality in the country to have a hazard mitigation plan, and you are not eligible for applying for any grants from disaster relief declarations if you don't have the plan in place. So New Hampshire Homeland Security has grant awards, the town of Exeter was awarded grant funds to work with the planning commission to update the plan. There was no cost to the town, the town staff that assisted me was, how we met your match, was with their staff time. So these plans are broken down into three parts. The first part of the plan discusses the natural hazards that impact Exeter, you're all very familiar with those. The middle part of the plan talks about what you have in place to be a more resilient community to hazards, and you have a lot. And then that final section of the plan is the action plan, where we outline additional steps the town could take. Now, that table in the back there, I'd like to point out with all the communities that I work with, you are not obligated by FEMA to, you know, do any of these things. This is really a brainstorming from all the appropriate people in town as to what would make Exeter more resilient. So the chief mentioned a couple of changes. The last, to this version, we add an infectious disease because of the COVID pandemic. FEMA does classify infectious disease as a natural hazard. So just to show you how hazard mitigation changes, right, I think when I worked with you on the 2018 plan, I probably asked the chief and the other department heads, do you want to add infectious disease? And you all said, why? So obviously, these documents are, are responsive to the needs of every community. So we added infectious disease to there. And the other change along the way is that for the, probably the past two rounds, New Hampshire Homeland Security and Concord had the authority to approve these plans. That no longer is the case. FEMA Region 1, the FEMA Region in Boston now reviews them, so it kind of added an extra hurdle to this review process, and kind of explained that, that gap in between, as I explained to your team here. We kind of had a lull there, as those of us who work on these across the state were learning about what FEMA was requiring, because there are new requirements. And those requirements involve some of the things you discussed tonight, transparency, making sure that vulnerable populations are aware of this and that we're documenting their needs. So we had to take some extra effort, I think for good reason, to do all those things. So I request that tonight, that the draft have a 30-day public comment period. It's up on the website. And if any people have any comments, I think they could direct them to Chief Pizon, and we can meet and discuss if we want to make those edits after the public comment period ends. I'll send a draft to Homeland Security and Concord, their staff will review it, and then after that, it goes to FEMA for review, and there may be a little bit of lag time as we wait for their review and comment. I'm sure there will be questions and things that we need to address that, from both bodies. And often, there are just things that I can make a quick email to someone in town. After FEMA approves it, it comes back to you for adoption, and then you're good to go for another five years, so.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
No, I'm just looking at the calendar for the 30-day timeframe.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So I'm not being rude on my phone here. And comments to our fire chief?
Yep. I think what, you know, if you've seen it, and I know some of you are familiar with prior iterations, it's really a narrative that describes where the hazard, you know, what the hazards are, where they impact you, and what you have in place to be more resilient. And Exeter's done quite a bit of work already, and a lot of this, and, and then what you would like to have in place to be more resilient, so.
Okay. So the action you need from us will come when you come back, correct?
Yes, the action will be after we have FEMA approval. So the only action I'm requesting tonight, Mr. Chairman, is just a public comment period, and that the town work to make sure the public is aware that that document is available for review and comment.
Okay.
Over the next 30 days.
Yeah, next 30 days, yep.
Is that that, Melissa?
I do.
So can I just?
Of course.
For the calendar purposes, 30 days would be July 24, and then our next Select Board meeting is August 5. So.
Well, after.
Do we have to bring?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, after July 24, I'll take any feedback that we've received from stakeholders in town, and then it will go to Concord for review.
So it doesn't have to come back?
No, it's not going to come back to us for a bit.
I missed that part, probably, when I was looking at my calendar.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
October, November.
Pardon me?
The wheels turn slowly. October, November.
Part of that lag in between is.
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we were hitting the dates that you were looking for, so.
I think there've only been a few plans approved under this new FEMA review. So I, actually, you probably saw in your email today, made edits today. I'm doing six plans right now. I had an edit on Portsmouth's plan, and I just added it to yours, because I figured, well, we may as well just keep adding all the information they want to see. So hopefully we'll have a smooth sailing.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Melissa?
No, I'll go last. Mine's a small comment about something else.
I'm fine.
I just wanted to let the board know and to thank Teresa, that she acted as a neutral third party to moderate our Pickpocket Dam public meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for either Teresa or?
Just.
Mr. Wilk, what do I call you now?
I know.
I'm still your emergency manager director. I believe we've entered into a, into a relationship or an agreement to remain part-time. It's a very small role. I think we agreed that 24 to 28 hours a month, so it's not a heavy lift. And I work heavily, a lot with Justin, your fire chief. Eventually, it may be a transition, and he might feel comfortable taking it over. But for right now, just kind of making sure that everything kind of flows, and Teresa's been superb. But my email, the town still works, so feel free to reach out, and.
The director.
I'll do the same with you, so.
Obviously, you reach out, you reach out in the morning, obviously.
I'm happy with this coffee.
That's right, in the morning. It's always a pleasure to come down and address you all again.
I'm going to stop there.
Please do.
Thank you.
Nothing good.
Thank you. Not at all. Thank you very much, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, next, this is exciting. Director Cronin is going to give us a public works update on the multiple projects that they've been working on, so.
Thank you very much. I included a memo in your packet with a summary on the status of a number of projects that are either in design or construction. These are primarily just infrastructure projects. We have a number of other things going on as well, but I'd like to run through those briefly, if we could, and then answer any questions you may have on them, please. So beginning with the Kingston Road project. So the Kingston Road project is a New Hampshire DOT roadway and pedestrian safety project. Includes widening of the road from the bridge over the Little River to Pickpocket Road. Along with that, we're going to be extending the sidewalk, connecting the existing sidewalk at the bridge to Tammeran Lane and the existing sidewalk network there, as well as installing a signalized pedestrian crossing at Riverwoods. The project started, construction started the week of April 15. Things have been progressing well. The first phase of widening is completed at this point, with the binder course of pavement installed. They've been working on the next phase, widening the shoulders, and then they'll be installing some drainage and sidewalk. Hopefully, the end of this week, we'll be paving the shoulders and the sidewalk in that project. We are on schedule, and we expect that'll be completed hopefully by the end of July, weather permitting. So good progress there. Webster Avenue Pump Station.
Do we want to ask questions as we're going, or wait and hold them?
Yeah, we can ask.
I have a question. The pedestrian crossing?
Mm-hmm.
What is that going to look like?
So it's a push-button, rectangle, rapid-flashing beacon. You see them, they're similar to the ones at PEA, except this one actually uses a push-button as opposed to.
So be yellow, push-button, no red?
No.
Okay. And it's going to be right there at the, that crossing?
That crossing.
Crossing, yeah? Okay, that'll be interesting. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. Your personnel on, on that project are outstanding.
Yes, we've been very pleased with the, the flaggers in that project, limited issues. They've done a great job managing multiple work zones, and we pass that on to, to the contractor as well.
Yeah, I drive that way quite a bit, and there's very little backup, but it feels very safe at the same time. So, great job.
Thank you.
Webster Ave, we had our pre-construction meeting with the consultants, New Hampshire DES, and our contractor back on April 10. Right now, we're in the process of reviewing some construction documents, particularly equipment and material submittals. We expect that the first phase of work, which will include demolition of the existing pump station and construction of the new one, will start roughly mid-July. As that work progresses, we'll move on to the installation of the forest main. We'll make sure to notify everybody along Webster Ave. You know, there will be some heavy, heavy equipment in that area. It is going to be, you know, there'll be some noise, typical with construction, and we'll make sure that our construction inspectors are keeping the butters apprised of the schedule and addressing any concerns that they have.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Acceptance receiving. The Select Board awarded a contract back on February 20 for the purchase of the equipment. We issued a purchase order for that. We have basically been awaiting a delivery date on that equipment, so we could then advertise the installation bid for the project. We got that lead time back in early May. We have started the bid solicitation process, which began last Thursday, so that'll be advertised for about a month, and then we'll be back before you on July 22, hopefully, to award a contract for installation on that.
Great.
And that, you know, pending that, we would start construction on that almost immediately. Next is the intersection improvements. We have two projects. First is Columbus Ave, Winter Street, and Railroad Avenue. This was in the 2021 intersection study. VHB provided us with three options for that intersection. Ultimately, the town decided to go with the least costly alternative that would have sort of the least impact. They recommended that because we had a number of improvements in other intersections nearby, and they wanted to see how those impacted the long-term operation of that intersection. So work on that began the week of April 29. Basically involved some geometric changes and curve-line adjustments, new pavement markings to sort of improve site distances and turning movements. We've completed that work. There is some lowman seeding that had happened recently. We're going to continue to monitor that growth over the growing season. But for all intents and purposes, that project is completed at this point.
I have a question. Can you remind me, in the, in that solution, if they, I know that the sightline changes were important, but do we have, did we propose a stop sign on Railroad Ave?
We did not, no. We, it proposed to move the existing stop lines on Columbus and on Winter Street.
Okay.
We did that. We made some minor modifications to what was recommended in the report based on the field conditions, but it, it didn't recommend a stop sign on Railroad.
Okay, thanks. I just drove through there, and I noticed there wasn't one. I thought there was.
The next intersection project is the Front Street, Pine Street, and Linden Street intersection. We're continuing to advance the design of a roundabout at this intersection. That was what was recommended in the intersection evaluation study as well. We're on our fourth design concept. One of the challenges with this project is, it's going to ultimately result in some sort of property impact. We've been working with the butters on the various designs. We've changed the geometry multiple times, look at different alignments. So right now, we're working with one specific butter, and we're hoping to come back with some positive news on that. If not, we'll have to, we'll look for some direction from the Select Board on how you want to proceed with that. Ultimately, we had to do some additional inspection of the sewer drainage systems out there. We anticipated that we were going to be relining those as part of this project, but those inspections determined that those pipes are in worse condition than we thought. So they should be replaced. We have a placeholder in the CIP this year to request funds to replace those during construction. But based on the current design schedule, I think the earliest we would see construction out there would be spring of 2025.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
We have the Linden Street Bridge over our Exeter River. We opened construction bids for this project on January 29, but they were significantly higher than the existing appropriations we had. We had two appropriations. One was bridge aid from DOT, and another was a warrant article. We've looked at DOT to see if we get additional bridge aid. Unfortunately, it's not available. We've done everything we could with our consultants and with the contractor to look for opportunities to reduce the scope, to try to save money. But I think ultimately, to do this project the right way, there are things that just can't be eliminated. So we've added a supplemental funding request to the 2025 CIP. If that were approved, we would rebid this project for construction in the spring of 2025, and construction would begin later that year.
Do we have an amount that we're looking at?
I think we're in the range.
Premature.
Yeah. Right now, I'd say we're north of a million. But that includes turning back the existing appropriation, which would have expired at the end of this year anyway. So I'm not exactly sure what the delta is on that.
Okay.
I think the total project cost would be in that range.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see, West Side Drive Utility Project. We had hoped to be in construction this year, but we've had some design changes that have delayed that a little bit. We held a neighborhood meeting back in March of this year, when we got to the 60% design phase. A lot of the people in the neighborhood had expressed concern with the unprecedented groundwater levels they were seeing as a result of the rain that we had over the winter. They had asked us to go back and relook at the monitoring wells we had installed, collect some data points there, and just make sure that the drainage system was going to be able to address those. In looking at that, we had to make some design changes, modify some of the stormwater BMPs that we had proposed, and that had to go back to DES for review. You know, there is a SRF funding component to this on both the drinking water and the clean water side, so they are part of the review process. They ultimately have to sign off on the designs. So we're addressing some of the comments that they had. Paul and the consultant met with them back on June 20. They had some follow-up questions and comments that we're working on right now. We're hopeful that we're going to have design ultimately approved by the end of fall this year, so that we could bid it over the winter and start construction in the spring of '24. You know, as far as construction goes. You know, as far as construction goes, you know, it is a little bit delayed, but that would be an ideal timeline for bidding a project of this magnitude, so, you know, we want to make sure that we get this right. It's a challenging neighborhood, and we're trying to address some significant concerns out there regarding stormwater, so, you know, again, we want to make sure we get it right.
Just to clarify, it says at the end, "spring of '24," but you mean spring of '25?
Yes, I do, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. There's been significant constituent inquiry here.
Yes, yeah.
And I appreciate the care that you've taken to answer those questions.
Yeah, we, we'll continue the outreach. There were some concerns brought to us. Try to make sure that we address, you know, some pothole issues and some drainage issues throughout the winter. You know, we know that it's an inconvenience to residents, and we want to make sure that we stay on top of that.
Yeah, there are a few activists out there, so thank you for reaching out to them.
Mr. Chartran said what I wanted to say, so I'll say, thank you for all the due diligence out there and taking care of those residents. Very much appreciated.
So, last two projects are related to drinking water. First is the new groundwater source that's being proposed on PEA property off Drink Water Road. DES approved our preliminary application for a new groundwater withdrawal permit back in March. We've been working with PEA on a letter of intent that was approved, and also on an auction agreement that was identified in that letter of intent. Moving forward, over the course of the summer, we're going to drill and test a new production well. That'll happen beginning in July and hopefully completed by the end of August. That's going to tell us what the new source would be rated for essentially and what we'd be permitting. So, once that's completed, if that ends up being viable, we bring that new source through the permitting process with DES, which takes quite a bit. We've added a CIP request for final design and construction of the well, and then if that were approved in March by the voters, design would begin almost immediately in 2025, and then construction in 2026. That includes rehabilitation of Larry Lane Well as well as part of that project. We're looking somewhere in the magnitude of about $6.8 million for that whole project. And then last up is the Surface Water Treatment Plant conceptual design. As you know, town meeting last year, they approved a $500,000 appropriation to start that conceptual design. I've been working with Paul on a request for qualifications, which is pretty close to done at that point, at this point, so we will hopefully be advertising that sometime in July. That'll likely be out for advertisement for three to four weeks, and then we'll vet those proposals as they come in and hopefully award a conceptual design contract.
Great. Any other questions for?
No, thank you.
Director Cronin?
Just one comment.
Please.
For you. This is wonderful. Thank you for putting this on the agenda, and thank you for delivering this. We get a lot of inquiries from constituents about this type of stuff, and to be able to point to one thing in the packet, like, here's your update, it's really helpful. Thank you.
And I appreciate, too, the outreach with our citizens. You're obviously very comfortable meeting with folks, and that was an important part of it when we first met, and you've delivered as you promised, so thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, our last discussion item. We have a memo from Assistant Fire Chief Matheson with a request for some PFAS fire turnout gear.
PFAS-free. Thanks for having us.
The font was, you need to change your ink.
No, just a little bigger. Even with the reading glasses, it's getting tougher and tougher.
I'll do better. Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm going to kind of just start for a quick second, just, Justin Pie is on Fire Chief. Next to me is Assistant Fire Chief Donald Matheson, and I'm going to kind of let Donnie tell you how we got to where we are today, and I'm going to try to explain where we want to go when we leave.
Okay, great. Okay.
So, firefighters, when we go to a building fire, there are about 265 carcinogens we're exposed to. They make up the constituents of that smoke. Those particulates do get on the gear. They're absorbed through the gear, they get on our skin. The skin is a large organ in your body, so we have that increased exposure level. Our respiratory system is protected by the self-continued breathing apparatus we wear, so scientifically, it's like 10,000 times better than the air we breathe in today, so no problems with that, but it's the fire gear that poses a problem. And also, part of the problem is how the fire gear, or PPE, protective personal equipment, is made, because it's made with some chemicals that are hazardous to us. I'll briefly kind of go through some of the chemicals we're exposed to. So arsenic, asbestos, benzene, cadmium, dioxins, some flame retardants, those might be things that are in furniture, things like that, formaldehydes, polychlorinated biphenols, pre- and polyfluorinated substances, which are PFAS, tricorethylene, vinyl chloride, and butadiene. My font needs to be bigger, I'm getting old. All right. So, some of these are directly known carcinogens or cause cancers, whether it's kidney, liver, prostate, lung, mesothelioma, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, lung, prostate. It is a very long list of carcinogens we're exposed to. So, there's, there's eight real kind of cancers that we get in the fire service. We're definitely way higher than the general public. So, testicular, mesothelioma, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, skin cancer, malignant melanoma, brain cancer, prostate cancer, colon cancer, and leukemia. And some of those rates are in excess of 200% higher than the general population. So, obviously, our goals as leaders in the Fire Department is to make a determination in the best interest of the health and safety of our members. I'm kind of a health and safety nerd, so I'll use like as low as reasonably achievable or a lot. We're going to try to use an assessment, some principles, and figure out what can we do to minimize our risk. So, out of fire, we do post-decon where our members rinse off with water all that heavy particulate that's on their fire gear. Then the gear gets put in a bag, it's sealed, it's taken back to the fire station. From there, it goes through a decon process where they put on gloves, because they're touching it, we'll call it contaminated. It gets disassembled, and it gets put through washing cycles that meet NFPA requirements for the decontamination of protective clothing. And then it's dried and put back together. Depending on the level of contamination, sometimes it's two to three wash cycles, and may involve some pre-rinsing and scrubbing. Everybody's trained to do that, and we have some members that have more advanced training to assist with sometimes heavier contamination. We may need to get out of that. So, we're here to talk about those PFAS, right? So, the PFAS in our structural firefighting gear are kind of a problem. You may have heard about this in drinking water or other things in itself. They're basically have a high persistence in toxicity. One of the sources we got was from foam. We used what's called Akreus Film Forming Foam, AFF. We can't, we don't use that anymore because it contained high levels of PFAS, and it contaminated a lot of water sources from runoff. We're basically banned from using that in the state of New Hampshire today unless it's under extreme dire emergency, and then we have to fill out paperwork. We use other agents that are PFAS-free. So, 30 years ago, the cause of death in firefighters was heart disease. Today, it's cancer in eclipses. Some studies say that 70% of firefighters are going to get cancer, some are not. It's still kind of anecdotal, there's still a lot of research being done from different scientists or agencies to try to determine, you know, the scope of it. But we are exposed to those multiple carcinogens in the products, you know, on our personal protective gear, so we want to try to get that off. We do a good job with the decon. Where it becomes problematic for us is in how the gear is made. So, your gear consists of three different components. We have an outside shell, and we have the inner layer that has two parts to it, and one of the parts we can't see is in the middle, and that's the part that contains the PFAS, okay? So, the outside shell is covered with a material that is meant to repel water, okay? And that contains PFAS chemicals as well. Back in 2017, we were able to switch our outside shell to a PFAS-free shell, because part of the problem with the PFAS shell on the outside is that stuff flakes off, gets into the atmosphere, and then you breathe it in. So, my 33 years mostly has been inhaling PFAS, apparently. But, the layer that we can't really control, and the one that's more problematic for us, is the part that's in the vapor barrier where I'm wrapping myself in that, and we sweat, our pores open, it gets absorbed into your skin at higher levels. So, there's basically no levels of PFAS in PPE are considered safe. There's, and I didn't know this, there's over 10,000 types of PFAS to date. None have been proven to be completely safe. Those that are most studied are either regulated or have advisories at levels as low as 0.004 parts per trillion, which is kind of like a number of zero. So, one part per trillion means that there is one gallon of contaminant per a trillion gallons of water. To put it in perspective, it's a pretty small amount. RPP is shown to contain these chemicals that contain PFAS and kind of above what has been established for drinking water standards. So, our fire gear has higher levels than that you're allowed to drink. So, we wear our PPE not only for going to building fires, but for fire alarm activations, car fires, fuel spills, propane, natural gas leaks, as well as other hazardous materials incidents, motor vehicle accidents. Obviously, our members don and do off this gear numerous times every day when we're responding to emergencies. So, I kind of equate it to, you know, you're at home, and you're cold, you wrap yourself in a blanket, well, what if it's an asbestos blanket, right? Eventually, you're going to get, you know, some type of cancer because asbestos is a known carcinogen. PFAS, most of the studies say that it's a leading chemical of concern, and it leads to cancer. There's still more research being done, but it's gotten to the point where it poses a large risk, and I have known personally way too many firefighters that I've been friends with that have gotten cancer and died, or have gotten cancer in retirement. And there are certainly different leading causes, but we think the protective clothing that we wear is certainly a large contributor to that, because we're in and out of it so much during the day or our shifts. So, it's really important to our members' health and safety. We want to try to minimize that risk. We have a pretty good cancer prevention program. We have annual physicals with a physical fitness program, but just one thing, we still haven't been able to minimize these risks until the spring. This spring, we have one manufacturer, which is called Stedair. It's a company that makes materials for the vapor barriers. They came out with a material that is PFAS-free. They passed the National Fire Protection Association test or approval, and it was tested by United Laboratories, or UL. UL does all the testing for any protective clothing that we wear, so it doesn't matter who makes it, it's all the same material tested by UL. And it is certified to be PFAS-free material. We did partner with our PPE vendor, which is Bergeron Protective Clothing. They distribute the Globe firefighter suits located in Pittsfield, New Hampshire. We've been working with them to come up with this and try to get together a proposal where we could try to see what we can do about replacing the gear.
Thank you, Donnie. So, luckily, Chief, retired Chief Wilken kind of started to pave this way and had broached this conversation probably about a year ago. So, on May 3rd, I met with Town Manager Rustine and the Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy regarding the PFAS-free gear, and both were supportive in us trying to find a creative way to bring a proposal forward that would be sensitive to the fact that this had a public safety complex that was voted on and approved last year. I wasn't comfortable bringing a giant CIP request this year. I wanted to turf that, so I was trying to be creative, and once I met and found there was support for this, May 4th, we instituted a spending freeze at the Fire Department. Unless it's an emergency expense for some piece of equipment, we have decided that it was in the best interest to put our people ahead of the equipment we were going to buy this year. Believe it or not, there's only three or four pieces of equipment that totaled about $26,000 that we were going to, you know, not roll the dice on, but things that were earmarked for this year to be replaced or procured, we're going to wait and do it in 2025. So, when in saying that, I did want to mention that you have a chance to Google when you get home. March of 2024 Concord Fire recognized the importance of replacing gear. They pushed through a request through City Council, and because we're all issued two sets of gear, so when one gets dirty, you have a backup. Donnie does a great job with keeping your backup sets over five years old and all kinds of good stuff. They were the first fire department in the state of that, of full-time department that we're aware of, that actually pushed forward a request and procured a set of gear for all their firefighters. Our anticipation is that we will, because we have a regular replacement schedule, our goal tonight is to secure funding to buy a single set for our members, and then through our replacement program, we will replace that second set on a regular schedule that will probably take three years or so, but the goal is your front duty gear will be the gear that's got PFAS-free. And then in those cases where it does need to get cleaned, you will wear your backup gear only in that time while the other gear is being dried, cleaned, and put back in service again. So, it's going to really limit the amount of exposure we have to that. So, I'm going to put it in perspective, so Donnie spent some time with our people at Bergeron and was able to, them reluctantly provide it so they bulk pricing opportunity because they don't like doing that, apparently. So, I'm going to put it in perspective, a single set of gear today, when we buy a single set of gear, and I rounded this to the closest dollar, is $3,988 for a single set of structural firefighting gear. And like was mentioned, that is not just worn fires, that's worn, anytime you see us in gear, a car accident, we're all, we're in. So, for 32 sets, which would be a set for every employee, would be $127,616. If we were to buy 35 sets of gear, so three more sets, that price drops to $3,622 per set, or a total dollar value of $126,770. So, I went back, I sharpened my pencil, we looked at our budget, where we stood today, and we are comfortable coming up today with the $26,770 from our current budget by turfing some of those equipment purchases that were earmarked to be made in 2024. And I'm going to let our Finance Director Corey, he's going to come up and talk about some dollar values, because what I anticipate is, once I have a little bit better visibility starting the fourth quarter, if I have, because I'm going to maintain the spending freeze to try to save as much money as we possibly can this year, if we have more funds to kick in, that's what we're going to do. And part of this revolves around some of the existing ARBA funds, and I'm hoping that we might find support tonight in releasing some of those funds to help procure that set of equipment, a gear for our employees. And we met today, so he'll be able to give us a much better picture of the financial part of it.
He always does.
He always does.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure, absolutely.
First of all, Assistant Chief Matheson, that, thank you for a very eye-opening and sobering report about the equipment. sobering report about the equipment. I appreciate that because I didn't know that. So thank you for letting us know and letting the public know. And I appreciate your efforts in trying to sharpen the pencil and putting a freeze on spending, but what, what's going to be sacrificed? Because I'm concerned, I don't want you to...
We have some equipment we're going, whether it's things we're going to use on the fire ground as far as the inste-command role. We have some, they're called the mobile command device that we use. We're going to buy some more of those, and that is about $5,000. There were some SaaS, some kits for some technical rescue equipment that we're going to buy. There was, we were looking at trying to buy a battery-operated occupation tool that was multipurpose to replace an older set of hydraulically operated tools. Those were probably the bigger ticket items. There were certainly other things like our iPads are very old, we're going to try to start replacing those. And there were some other things, but...
Will that set you back significantly?
We can survive, I think.
Yeah, we tried to find items that we felt were not going to set. I don't want to like push forward gear that's PFOS-free to help protect our people, then cut corners and put them sacrifice safety samples out. So what we were able to look at were items that we felt as though we're not going to sacrifice people's safety, because that would be counterproductive if we did something like that.
And that includes your own?
Yes, correct. The, the tool he mentioned is battery-operated. Right now, we have a hydraulic, so we drag a motor out, we start the motor, we hook lines up, we tether to it. Obviously, battery-operated tools have come a long way, and the cutting pressure between those new tools exceed the hydraulic. So there are not things that are going to put us in an unsafe situation, which is why I think that, because I, when I was here, well, a long ago, I mentioned in a meeting on a Friday, in the office meeting, that when you start spending like $7,000 for an alternator on a ladder truck, there is certain expenses that I just can't foresee right now. So I felt comfortable enough with the items that we've earmarked to take and put on hold that it wasn't going to sacrifice anybody's safety. So, do I appreciate you asking that?
I have two questions. So I'll stick with the budget question first. What's that going to do to your proposed budget for next year, though? I mean, that's, that's $26,000, $27,000. That is, how much backup is that going to, how many years? Do you understand how?
I do.
I'm not asking the question as clearly as I would...
No, 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 that's okay.
It's like hiring new firefighters. When you hire five or six in one year and I take all my money from protective clothing, I have to buy them protective clothing.
Yeah.
It sets you back a few years until you catch up with that cycle.
Okay. So you feel pretty, I mean, of course you do, or you wouldn't be here to feel confident. Okay. And then the other question, you were talking about this would be one set and you'd have to go to the old set. What is that? No, sorry, I don't know. You'd have to go to the old set while it's being cleaned?
Correct.
Is there a timeframe that, the turnaround for the cleaning?
It's, it's pretty quick.
Roughly two hours.
Oh, very quick. Okay, we're not talking days or weeks.
Usually wash two sets at the same time.
Yeah, thanks.
So it's pretty quick.
It's pretty quick.
Good.
We felt that would really minimize exposure, as we felt pretty comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before Finance Director lays out the...
Good evening. So for a little bit more context, about a month ago, in one of our leadership meetings we have every other week, meeting with Chief and a number of us, Chief brought this up as a concept and, hey, what do you guys think of this? And we all kind of looked at him and said, well, what are you waiting for here? So the fact that he's coming to us and willing to sacrifice some of his budget, I think it speaks volumes to these guys. So what I said during that meeting was, let me go back and look at what we have, whether it be the EMS fund or ARPA, and the contribution that these guys can make from their operating budget to see what we can come up with. I had thought that EMS fund would be a good source for some piece of it, but given the contribution that the fund made towards the console, the communication console, I'm a little concerned of taking too much more from that. So I guess my recommendation is we don't look at that for a couple of years to take any large contributions from. So I personally took that off the table. I think we kind of agreed there. So that takes us to ARPA. We have $130,000 in ARPA funds left, including the consideration of $12,000 for Swayze Park Design. So $130,000.
So 130...
130. That's all committed.
Including the 12, correct, correct.
Factoring in...
Factoring in.
Yeah, so 142 minus 12.
Thank you.
So if we were to take the $25,000 from the suppression budget, that would require out of ARPA, if that were the avenue you were going to go down, $101,700, which would bring the balance of ARPA down to around $29,000.
Mr. Stevens, can you remind the board when the deadline is to allocate the ARPA funds before we lose them?
Yeah, we have to obligate the funds by the end of the year, so we have to have a contract.
This year?
Yes, 2024, sorry. We have to obligate the funds by the end of 2024, which means we have to have a contract in hand for all of the funds, and we have to spend them by the end of 2026.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll wait till you drop.
That's just about it.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to interrupt your flow. Okay, so two questions. One, is there something in the pipeline that this $29,000 remaining would be needed for? Would we use it for Swayze? Is there any other reason?
Ultimately, that's up to you folks, but yes, we have tons of people and departments that could come up with something. In fact, we've got ideas. One of the biggest concerns, and biggest concern is not the right way to put that, but that if, in fact, the Siphon Project, knock on wood, fingers, toes crossed, does finish up by the end of July, we're going to start getting questions about what we're doing with the road and how that's working now. As you heard, or we had spoken at a previous meeting that we're coming back with a proposal for Ironwood. And at one point, we had had money, or we had thought that maybe we would use some ARPA money to put something in place. We wouldn't have that. We just have, what, what did you say, $29,000 left? So this would be purchasing these. So if we went and wanted to do something in Swayze, we may have the $29,000, but we may need to put something in for our CIP.
There went my thought, okay. No, I was just, I mean, I appreciate what the fire department was, has been doing with the freeze. I always worry about it getting backed up in the budget process, but yeah, I was going to suggest that we just pay for it if we vote to do it, but we have to take care of Swayze and have one. So I do appreciate you penny pinching.
Yeah.
So in the upcoming year, we're going to be going through a revaluation, and then we also have three union contracts that we're negotiating. So Finance Director Stevens, myself, and Mr. Dean are trying to be cognizant of the budget for next year, knowing that we have some larger ticket things that may be coming down the pipe.
Yeah. I appreciate the report. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I appreciate Selectwoman Belanger, where you were going with that. I, that's why I asked the question of you, and I feel confident that you've identified funding that won't negatively affect your safety, the ability to do your jobs. I mean, it's, it's never easy to cut, but I'm convinced that you've done this very deliberately and thoroughly, and, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that contribution. Do we agree that we don't want to touch the EMS funding?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And if there are no other...
I'm sorry, can I just ask Corey one question? That's just to build that back up. So that fund, right? Because we, we take a good hit on that, okay?
Yeah, and in two years, after, after next year, we'll start to see that funds.
Build back up.
It's a breathing thing because it has revenue stream all of the time, and we'll start to build up again, but right now, in the next 12 to 24 months, it will be need.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I had a good understanding and people vote, do too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If the board would allow me, I'd make a motion.
Can I just say one thing? Those numbers are different because you said $26,000 and it threw me off, just so you know, so we might need to do some math, and I apologize because I didn't have that...
I did, only because when I went back after we, I met this morning, we met this morning, Melissa, Corey, myself, and Donnie, and I went back and went through my budget again, and I was just trying to make around numbers. I could come up with the 20, $26,770 out of our budget would leave around $100,000 in ARPA funds that could be allocated. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So I wrote something out, I got to move backwards.
Okay.
Bear with me.
Sure thing.
So the total is not to exceed 126,754, is that correct?
126,770.
126,770.
Correct.
From which you can contribute 26,770.
Correct.
And that's 100K from ARPA.
Correct.
Okay. Everyone good?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and this quote is good until June 30th, correct?
Yeah, they're going to honor that pricing, so we're, this has been an ongoing conversation with the vendor that they knew would be here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Finally, do you need a contract signed by anyone? Or is this...
No, I don't believe so.
Not tonight? Well, put it in there anymore?
Yeah.
Tell you what, I'll put it, I'll put it in the motion.
Just put it in, and if we don't use it, then great, yes. You read my mind.
Yeah.
Then I would entertain a motion to purchase 35 sets of PFOS-free turnout gear for the fire department for a total not to exceed $126,770. The funds to be allocated as follow, $26,770 will be paid by the 2024 general fund fire department budget, with the remaining $100,000 to be paid by the town's local ARPA funds. And further to authorize the town manager or his or her designee to sign any appropriate paperwork.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
No, thank you. We're really...
You will ever hear from the federal government about the passage of the PAC Act?
The PAC Act?
Like PAC or PACT?
PACT.
PACT.
It's to cover, and I don't know how many veterans you have in your department, but it covers anything like inhalation, smoke inhalation, any sort of treatment that would have been incurred while serving.
Military service?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm not aware of it, but I made a note, and I will be looking into it.
Okay. And I can follow up with you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Congratulations.
I'd also like to say thank you very much for the support for the employees.
It's, well, it's important.
Moving into regular business, Madam Clerk, you have the night off. We could invite Public Works Director Cronin back to the microphone.
Back to the stage.
Thank you again. So before you tonight, we have a request to award a contract for the construction of the Epping Road near-term improvements, as well as amend our existing contract with VHB to include construction phase engineering services, which would essentially be construction administration and oversight on the project. Back in 2021, VHB was contracted to design the improvements. Those improvements are from Continental Road to Route 101 and include widening the roadway, adding center turn lanes, sidewalks, and improving the drainage out there as well. In May of last year, at the request of the town manager, Paul Vlasic, a town engineer, worked with Severino to come up with some cost-saving perspective on the project and a estimate for construction. That estimate came in at roughly 1.4 million. It's our understanding that the existing Epping Road tax incentive district financing plan only allows us essentially to spend up to roughly 1.1 million. The existing design costs about $100,000, so that leaves us with roughly $1 million in available funding to proceed with the near-term improvements. We went back to Severino, asked them to come up with some short-term improvements that we could proceed with this construction season, with the intent of eventually modifying the financing plan with another amendment next year to complete the near-term project. So those improvements this year, if you're to authorize a contract, would include essentially widening the road and improving the drainage out there in preparation for new sidewalks, pavement markings, turning lanes, and improvements all the way from Continental to Route 101. So for you, we have a contract to do that work, as well as the amendment with VHB to oversee that work as it's happening this year. If it's approved, that work would start this summer and be completed by the middle of October of this year. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Director Cronin?
I don't have any.
Okay. Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to award a contract to Severino Trucking Company for the construction of Epping Road, near-term improvements in the amount of $800,000, and to amend the existing contract with VHB to include construction phase engineering services in the amount of $69,900.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your presentations.
Yes.
We tried to get him here in one night so he didn't have to come back. Thanks, Steve.
Have a good night, Steve. Okay, we have a E911 recommendation for a street name and street addressing. I knew you were here for another reason.
Good evening.
And Eric liked to stay till the conclusion of the meetings, but...
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. You have in front of you memorandum from Doug Eastman, the E91 Chairperson. We are looking for a recommendation for a new street name for a new public way called the SAC, being created off of Watson Road for the recently approved 12-lot subdivision of the former Carlisle property at 19 Watson Road. So the recommendation is that you give the new road the name Signature Circle, and we have attached a map with the lot numbers as well.
And that tax map parcel is 33-26?
26, correct.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I just wonder where the name comes from. I'm sorry. It just seems like an odd...
The Honorable Attorney.
It was one of the options provided by the builder.
Okay, thank you. Curiosity.
We vetted it and we...
They liked it?
No other conflicts, so...
As the people that live in a...
They wanted it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
If there are no questions, comments, then I would entertain a motion to name the newly created public street, providing access to a 12-lot subdivision off of Watson Road as Signature Circle, and to number the proposed dwellings accordingly in compliance with Chapter 14 of the town ordinance, as depicted on the attached map, tax map parcel 33-26. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again, Deputy Chief. Town managers report.
Can we go to the dog warrant first? I apologize about that. It's not quite in the packet. It was an addendum. So just looking for a motion tonight to have the board members sign the dog warrant.
I would entertain a motion to authorize the select board to sign the 2024 dog warrant.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. Well, my phone is telling me it's time to get ready for bed, so. We held our bi-weekly leadership meeting, which is a various group of department heads continued that on with Finance Director Stevens. Finance Director Stevens and I continued to meet with various departments that may be affected by proposals in the Keegan Report as a way to continue to work with the staff, and we hope to bring a presentation to you on that at the end of July. So we continued those meetings. The town offices held an employee luncheon last week, and it was, we typically would combine our annual... an employee luncheon last week, and it was, we typically would combine our annual service awards with our holiday during Christmas time, and we split up the awards to be in the summer as another reason to get together, and so we honored some of our staff that have been here. Um, I participated in a meeting with Darren, Nico yourself, and Dave Cowie regarding some of our local businesses' concerns about parking for the folks that are constructing the Ioka Building. So I will say that is a work in progress still, but we are continuing to keep that on our radar. Um, the town celebrated Juneteenth, and the employees had the day off last Wednesday. I'd like to send a huge thanks to the Parks and Rec Department. Um, last week, we had sort of a heat emergency, and staff was supposed to have Wednesday off, summer camp was off, and Greg Beeson, the director, and the assistant director, David Tovey, were able to get the lifeguarding staff and the concession staff to come in from, I think it was nine to five, so that the community could enjoy the pool, even though it was technically a vacation for the salaried staff. So a huge thank you to them. Um, and then I continued to work on various personnel issues in all the various departments.
Thank you. I too would like to take a moment to recognize Greg Beeson and Dave Tovey and all of the staff. Last Monday, Melissa and I were having a conversation in recognizing the heat wave that we were getting and the fact that we were, we would be celebrating the federal holiday of Juneteenth. Um, I asked Melissa to explore the possibility of Greg trying to find staff for at least a few hours to provide, um, you know, cooling opportunity for folks that needed to cool off. And Greg, you know, exceeded my expectations in finding staff that were willing to man the pool for seven hours during the hottest part of the day, mind you, 10, 10 to 5. And, um, so I want to recognize all of them first, but also, I think, a work in progress, that our summers are not going to get any cooler. So I think I would like to work for next summer, um, you know, and the library cannot always be the only option, because of course, they're closed for holidays as well. So I think we need to identify various cooling locations or cooling mechanisms for folks when we do get these heat waves. But again, thank you, Greg and Dave.
Cooling and warming, I brought that up before, and it's actually in the hazard mitigation plan that we find a solution for that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Belanger.
So our last meeting, I didn't have the Parks and Rec notes with me, and I won't elaborate on too much of them, other than just, I really want to stress to people at home to look at the town website, the Parks and Rec, the amount of programs that they have available is, I could be here for the next hour and a half to, to go over it, but it's really important to take a look and see if there's something that interests people at home. Um, they're also working on a grant that hopefully we'll have information on for some senior programming. Um, Planning Board was last, it was the 13th. You're right now, I'm tired. I can't remember if that was last Thursday, but anyway, we really met just to continue, um, what was on the agenda for the night because that, that applicant wasn't ready. Um, but then there was some other conversation. Um, and what came out of that very quick half-hour meeting was that Ms. English, who is a member of the Planning Board, reported that Kristin Murphy, Exeter's Conservation and Sustainability Plan, received a Hayden Award at the Rocky and Planning Commission's annual dinner. She was recognized for her significant contribution to the community or to conservation and planning. So congratulations for Kristin. Um, that was awesome.
Have we been given any notice of that, or...
We didn't. I found out about it.
So she snuck that by us, huh?
Yeah.
Just so typical of her.
There, that's what I was just gonna say. I hesitated in saying anything.
Oh, I did.
No, no, I'm so glad, I'm so glad that you did, because she, she was trying to sort of keep it under the radar. I'm really happy you all know.
Oh, well deserved, Kristin.
She now supports the Energy Committee, so she's even more, she's got even more under her, on her shoulders that...
Sorry, Dan, I should have, like, said...
No, no, I'm happy you brought it up, because I did not recall.
Yeah, but I still should have sent you an email in case you wanted to be the one. Sorry.
It's all good.
Um, and that's my report.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gil.
I didn't have any town committee meetings, but I would like to pass through a very little bit about what happened on the last day of the House session where we were considering the House bills amended by the Senate. And besides my falling on the marble floor and hurting myself, um, we had a couple of really good things that happened. Um, we extended the supplemental nutrition program for kids that got free or reduced lunch through the summer, so that they will be, will be able to get meals during the summer. Uh, the, let's see, there's a little bit of bill reform, which has, prohibits judges from setting bail at, or cash bail at a level higher than a defendant can afford, and also shortens the period up for when holding somebody. Uh, oh, and for those ophthalmologists out there, both of the bills dealing with the ophthalmologist versus optometrist died, or inundated by emails. Uh, there's a good one. There is one, there's a voter, uh, Selectwoman Cowan mentioned them at the last meeting. In elections, uh, I want to see where I go. Oh, 1370. 1370 was, is a bill that gets rid of the affidavit votes, makes it difficult for people to identify that they're actually American naturals, natural or naturalized citizens. You need a birth certificate, or your, it's all the things that Ms. Cowan talked about. Your name changes because you get married, or you've moved from, you know, your passport's good for 10 years, and who knows where you lived, you know, between when you got it and where you are now. Um, a lot of restrictions and a lot more work for the moderator and the supervisor checklist on the, on the...
Town clerk.
Town clerk, and then the people who work at the polls, poll workers. Um, that was laid on the table also, so it died. And that is it. Uh, the residential parking, I was talking to Selectwoman Belanger about this. There was a couple of different bills, a Senate bill and a House bill, that dealt with residential parking, and they either came, uh, they went to a committee of conference and each took a little bit of the others, the House or Senate bill to put together. And this one bill has, as its subject, residential parking landlord-tenant occupancy rights, and, um, changes to 79E, giving a tax cut for qualifying structures that turn commercial spaces into housing. Um, the parking thing that they put in here was that a town cannot regulate more than one parking space per unit, according to the Senate, or that's what they offered. The House was offering two per unit, and so they compromised and put it at 1.5 cars per unit. So figure that out. Get a motorcycle, I guess, or an electric bike. Um, but the other things are really, and the landlord-tenant occupancy rights one was derived actually from somebody squatting in someone's home. People left for a few months and came home, and their house was occupied. Let's see, and I think I'm gonna leave it there. Cannabis failed. And oh, the education freedom account eligibility. The family income number increased. So more people will be eligible. That's it.
Thank you very much for that update. Selectwoman Cowan?
My committee meeting was canceled, unfortunately.
Okay. Selectman Chartrand?
I have no report.
No report. I met with the Swayze Park trustees on June 12th. It was a very quick meeting. It was more siphon update and just some placeholders on the agenda. I think the meeting took about 15 minutes. Um, I also attended the employee appreciation lunch, and, um, just really nice to get the group in here. Um, and Melissa gave out the awards. I was privileged to give her her award for five years of service, and then just spoke for about 90 seconds to the group, and, uh, just said that every day is Employee Appreciation Day, and, um, we are very fortunate to have such a great staff in this town, come in day in and day out to serve our community and serve our public, and, um, every once in a while have to put up with stuff they don't have to. So we're just really appreciative of their efforts.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for attending.
Oh.
I really wanted to, but there was just not enough time for me to rearrange.
There was food here.
Yes, so very much appreciated.
It's nice to see the employees in a setting outside of their, their desks and their offices. Um, I sat with Melissa and Darren. Darren actually spearheaded a meeting, and he was able to get the Ioka owners to come in and sit with us, and I think you kindly put it that it's a work in progress. But Mr. Winham is taking the initiative to try to work with the businesses as best he can. I know we had tasked back when the owners were here, I think it was late November, early December, we asked the town manager's office to be proactive, which they'll continue to be, but where Darren has that direct relationship with the businesses, he's also gonna serve as a conduit, and I think that will be successful, so.
Do we know how much longer that project is gonna take? No?
We, no, no.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
I just, I do feel bad.
I do have a comment.
Sure.
Um, I appreciate you taking that meeting. Um, I am delighted that those two buildings are being rehabilitated. I'm astonished at how long it's taking. And especially the business owners, my fellow business owners right in that area have been impacted tremendously. And whatever we can do to, um, you know, get them to be very conscious about the spaces they take, and when they take them and how many they take, which is what that meeting was all about, and I appreciate you taking it, that, that would be good, because sometimes there's spaces being taken that don't need to be taken. So whatever they can do to be conscious and use other spaces, that would be wonderful. So thanks for taking that meeting.
We also met briefly with Mr. Sharples to sort of debrief from our last select board meeting and the rug property testimony that we heard, and, and just, you know, just sort of summarizing the meeting, debriefing, and, um, informally contemplating what next steps we can be taking. Obviously, you know, we said it in our last meeting, we don't own the property, but certainly there are, there are certain steps we can start to take. So nothing specific to report, other than the fact that we are informally still working towards what we can be doing on our end. So keeping our word to our folks here that came before. So I think that's all that I did. Correspondence, we already talked about the two thoughtful emails on Pickpocket, and then there's also the NHMA legislative update. Board calendar through September, we have July 8th, July 22nd, August 5th, August 19th, September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, September 16th, and September 30th.
And Mr. Chair?
I guess it's the 5th and the 19th?
Yes.
And then what is it?
September 3rd.
Yep.
September 16th, and September 30th.
Thank you.
And just to let the board know, I do leave for vacation this Friday, which is the 28th, and am out the week of the 4th, and will return for July 8th. Cory Stevens, Finance Director, is gonna step up in my place, as well as Nico. So if you need anything, okay?
Have a wonderful...
Thank you.
Absolutely amazing.
I will.
Okay, um, if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32A and C.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. We'll be moving into non-public. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.